We're just going to hold it like this. I hold it with two hands, but five steps.
Come on, try help me. Ozana. The highest in the sky. Oh. Ah. Let the King believe today. Let the King believe today. Oh, Ozana. Come on, try. Sing, Ozana. Oh, Ozana. Ozana. The highest in the sky. Ah. Let the King believe today. Let the King believe today. Oh, Ozana. Let the King believe today. 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 Oh, Ozana. Come on, lift up your voice to the Lord. Lift up your voice, somebody, lift up your voice, give him praise. Lift your hands to the Lord, lift your hands up, lift your hands up. Speak to the Lord, speak to the Lord. Speak to the Lord. Give him all the praise. Give him all the honor. Lord, we adore you, oh God. We exalt your name today. We lift up your name because you're good. Lord, we thank you. Hallelujah, child of God. Praise the Lord. Praise the Lord. Before you sit down, turn to your neighbor. Give a high five to five people. And sit there, be straight, five people next to you. I say, five people next to you. Five people next to you. Give a high five to five people next to you. Bring them, bring them, bring them. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Praise the Lord. Praise the Lord. Hallelujah. Praise the Lord. God is good. Praise King Jesus. Are you enjoying being here? Are you enjoying being here? Is someone enjoying being here?
How many people are happy of being here?
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah. Let me tell you something. It's good. To be in the presence of the Lord. It's bad. To dwell where the rest of God. It is a very. To be where God is. But it is a very bad. To be where God was.
Is someone understanding me?
Yes.
Are you, are you understanding me? I know somebody is catching it. That time your neighbor said, neighbor. Are you annoyed? Are you outraged that you're here? Say, my friend.
My friend. I'm so happy. That we are together with you. Where God is. My friend. I'm looking at you. Like someone. Like someone, God is. I'm looking at you. That something is righteous. Say, my friend. These few days remaining. There is something good. Coming at your door. In the name of Jesus. If you believe this will happen to you.
Hallelujah. Praise the Lord. You can have your seat in the presence of God. Amen. Those who are sitting far away, we have enough seats here. Just draw closer. Have your seat with us. Come and enjoy it. If you're not working on machines, I don't need you behind. Please, don't leave the keys, be touching it a little bit. Yeah, the, the, those ones, the guys who are behind, the drum guys should all come this side. I want those guys not to be interrupted and interfere with it. Praise the Lord.
The Bible says. I'm not the preacher. I'm only doing one thing. I'm going to invite the preacher.
Hallelujah.
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 David says. I feel joyous in your word. I feel joy in your word.
I rejoice at your word.
I rejoice at your word. I rejoice at your word. More than somebody who has gotten a treasure.
Hallelujah. More than one who has found great treasure. Hey, my God.
I rejoice in your word.
Can you switch microphones with her? Just give her this mic, other microphone. Good, very good anointing. My God. The preacher. There's power here. Praise the Lord.
I rejoice at your word. More than somebody who has gotten treasures. While praising the Lord. There is something the Lord told me. It was a song sung by the children of Israel. Psalms 1:04. They say. If the Lord was not by our side. Let Israelites say. If the Lord was not on our side. When people rose against us. If the Lord. Was not on our side. When our enemies gnashed their teeth against us. They tightened their teeth like a grasshopper. If the Lord was not on our side. They would have swallowed us all. They would have swallowed us all. When their anger rose against us.
Am I speaking to somebody? Some of you have explained the masses of God. By now, you would have been good long time ago. If the Lord was supposed to contact your enemies. On how you should be treated. Your enemy would say. That one. But the Bible says.
They would have swallowed us all. The rivers, the seas would have swallowed our understanding. The proud water would have swallowed our understanding.
Those guys would have swallowed you, they would have swallowed you. In their pride. In their pride. Praise the Lord. And the Bible says.
They would have swallowed us in their words. But verse 6. Verse 6 says. But blessed be unto the Lord. But blessed be unto the Lord. But praise be to the Lord. Blessed be to the Lord. That he has not given us.
To be prayed in their mouth.
Oh, yes. He has not given us to be praying to their mouth. He has not given us as meat for eating.
Somebody. Stop your neighbor saying they're talking about you. Hallelujah.
Blessed be to the Lord. Who did not give us. And to food to their mouth. He never gave us. To give meat into their teeth.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
If it was for your enemies, they would have eaten you. Blessed be to the Lord. Was not giving us a spray into their mouth.
And it continues to say. Our understandings were kept like.
Our lives were saved.
Oh, yes.
And the Bible says, we escaped. Hallelujah.
Amen.
We escaped.
But our understanding was kept from them.
Our soul.
Our soul. Yes. Like for a bat. Like for a bat.
You wish, Migi.
In their.
You wish, Migi, in their trap. Hallelujah.
The Bible says their trap was broken. Their trap got broken. And we got saved.
Praise the Lord.
Hallelujah.
Praise the Lord.
Hallelujah.
He will make their bows and their arrows to break. Just for your sake. So ladies and gentlemen.
Verse 7 says. Our help. Is in the name of Jehovah. Who created heaven and earth.
Somebody pray. Somebody say, Lord, I thank you. Lord, I thank you for saving me. And thank you for redeeming me. In the name of Jesus. Hallelujah. Praise the Lord. Ladies and gentlemen. This very evening. I want to take this great honor. To recognize all the men of God who are in our midst. We are so glad that you're here. We are going to receive the ministration of the word of God. The man I'm going to invite. Is an anointed man of God. Are you guys ready to receive the man? Let us go back to Nebi, these guys are not threats. Yeah, this is Nebi, okay. Ah, Pastor Rob is like, this is Nebi. Yeah, I'm going to invite evangelist Aaron to come. Before, before he comes, before he comes. Do me something. One big favor. Just stand up on your feet. And tell your neighbor. He wants you to stand up. So that we can receive the man of God. Who is coming to minister the word. Right now. In power. And as the ministers. The Bible says. The speed of the Lord is upon me. For the Lord has anointed me to bring the good news to the poor. So the man I am inviting is a man who holds in powerful miracles, signs and wonders. Be ready and prepared to receive from God. Ladies and gentlemen, clap your hands as well. Hallelujah. Amen. Welcome, man of God. Amen. Praise the Lord. Praise the Lord.
Also receive energy like for Pastor Clarence. So, let's pray. Heavenly Father. Thank you for your goodness. Thank you for the fact that you're touching each one's heart. You're reaching each one personally. All those that think they are not enough and worthy. All that, all those that feel like God does not come to them, today is your day. Heavenly Father, touch our hearts. Answer all our needs. Holy Spirit, come here. As I am preaching, people are going to get healed. All your problems are going to be taken care of and the word is going to be shared. If you came from home and you're worrying about energy. Just listen to the word of God and it will be taken care of. In Jesus' name I pray.
Amen.
So, I. I am from Worship Harvest. And I did send myself here, I. I bring you greetings from our parents. Who is that not excited? I bring you greetings from our parents. Yes, who sent us here? I didn't send myself. So today. Take your seat. Today we are going to praise the Lord. Yes, I want the worship team to be around. Today we are going to dance. Yes, I am just coming to give you a commercial break. I am going to give you the message from God and we are going to dance after. Because. God does not heal serious people. Our God is not a God of seriousness. Yes, and also our God loves joy. Yes, because the Bible says with joy you'll draw water from the wells of salvation. Have you been thirsty? Yeah. Have you been thirsty, like today the day was hot? And God. Imagine God is like water. Imagine the water you took to them. That's how God is going to satisfy you today. God is meeting you at your point, wherever you are. And today I want to teach about God's love. About God's love and why God loves you. So, I am going to set the stage clear. I am going to tell you why God loves you. And then we are going to pray for the sick. I'm going to pray for everyone who wants healing. Because today I said we are going to praise the Lord. We are going to dance. Just like the Bible says, Kish David danced until his blood had fell off. Yes, we are going to dance for the Lord and it is not going to be a shame. Yes, we are here for three days, this is the second day. Yes, we are just ushering you for tomorrow. Tomorrow, come with someone else. In fact, come with all the sick people. Bring all the sick people, bring all those that, those that don't have well. Bring everyone who has pain in their heart, God is going to heal them. Yes, tomorrow, that is tomorrow. If you can hear the sound of my voice. No, God is meeting you where you are. God does not want you to clean yourself. God wants you to come the way you are. So, here are the reasons why God loves you. God loves you because he is love. Just like fish. Fish does not know water. Yes, because that's why it stays. So God is love. Just imagine. Ah, when we're younger. Yes, my parents used to buy us Christmas clothes. And that cloth you're supposed to wear it only on Christmas Day and on Sunday. And after, after going to church, you're supposed to take off that cloth. Yes, but I'm here to tell you. God is here to clothe you. He's here to clothe you with glory and love. He's here to clothe you with love. If you're here and you feel like your heart is far away from God. There's no God says he is here and next to you. If you're here and you're hearing the voice, my voice. I want you to know that God loves you. He loves you. And he wants the best for you. I am going to mention a portion of scripture that all of us are familiar with. I feel like it's the easiest scripture in the Bible. And it's about God's love. It's from John 3:16. It says, for God so loved the world. That he gave. His only begotten son. That whoever believes in him. Will not perish but have everlasting life. I'm here to tell you, God does not want you to, to become clean, he wants you to just believe. He wants you to believe that he loves you. He wants you to believe that he gave his only son, Jesus. And Jesus died for our sake. Jesus died and inherited your pain. Even as you're seated there, even as you're walking, I want you to know that Jesus loves you. And he's healing you wherever you are. So, Jesus, Jesus didn't wait for you to get clean. He didn't wait for you to organize yourself. He died for you. He died for you. He's not waiting for you to stop drinking. He loves you from where you are. He's not waiting for you to stop stealing. He loves you the way you are. And he wants you to come to him the way you are. He wants you to come to him. The way you are. And one thing you should know. Just position your heart to receive. Like I said to them. We are going to dance. We are going to serve and, and praise God. We're going to praise God, we're going to dance. And I want you to dance. Because your healing is coming in your praise. Our God is a God of joy. He's not a God of serious people. He's a God of joy. That's why we are going to dance. We are going to dance. We are going to dance. Like, look at your neighbor and tell your neighbor, give me space. Because we are going to dance and I believe. In our dancing. God is going to heal us. God is going to take care of every problem you have. Everything you're worrying about, God is going to take care of that. And the Holy Spirit is here right now, he's searching each one. The Holy Spirit is here right now, he's searching each one of us where we are. He's not worried about your age. He's not worried about your sex, whether you're a woman or a man. He's here to help you. The Holy Spirit is here to help us. Because when Jesus died and went back to heaven. He left the Holy Spirit here to help us. So as you're here, as you're seated, ask the Holy Spirit to come to your heart. Let him come to your heart. Because once you receive the power of the Holy Spirit. Every problem you have in your heart. Every sickness you have. Is being taken care of. As you've seated here, I want you to know that Jesus loves you. I am going to dwell on Jesus' love. Reminds me of a story. The village I come from, I come from Soroti. So I would go to the village and be with my cousins. During lunchtime. Their mother would cook food. So when it would come to time for Minggo, the, the posho, the kalau. Every time she would step out of the kitchen. These boys would go back, go to the kitchen and keep adding water in the saucepan. They would keep adding water in the saucepan. Because they assumed whatever she had cooked, whatever water she had put was not enough for Minggo. Every time she would step out. They would add water. And she would come, she would come back and be like, but here, this water is not boiling. So. So one, one time she decided to hide behind the, the kitchen. So, as usual. And they added water. And this time she caught him. And she didn't say anything. The rest were waiting for him to come back and report. And he was not coming back. And now. The other one went. He also went and added water. They also caught him. And she took them where she was. The, the one who was left was like, he's still not coming. So he also went. The same story, he caught him. And. The thing is, the mother didn't punish them, she just laughed at them. I don't have this story because it's, it's the same story of Jesus. Someone here, you might be thinking you're very far away from God. You just keep, you think Jesus loves you from very far. Jesus doesn't love you from very far. He wants you to come the way you are. Just like those girls who kept adding water in the saucepan. They believed that their mom was not cooking food that was enough for them. Yet she knew how much they ate. Jesus knows how much you need. Even right now, here where you are, Jesus knows how much you need. He knows what you need. And he's here to give you whatever you need. And I want you, you who is seated, who you is walking and is hearing the sound of my voice. I want you to know that today Jesus is coming to visit you. And God does not care. He does not want you to know people in the crowd. He wants you as you. He wants your heart. And he wants your heart. And he's just waiting for you to believe. He's not waiting for you to stop drinking. He's not waiting for you to stop smoking. He's not waiting for you to stop sleeping around. He's not waiting for you to stop stealing. Jesus is saying, "Calm as you are." And I'll give you peace. And that's why God sent Jesus on earth. To love us and to set us free. Jesus is waiting for you to accept him, to turn your heart towards him. He's waiting for you to accept him. I don't know why I'm stuck on this point of you accepting Jesus. But I believe there's someone here. You feel so far away. You feel so dirty. But Jesus says, "Calm." It gives me a picture of a young child. Mothers here, you've interrupted the children. When they go and play, you find them playing in dirty water. And you call them. The first thing they do is to try to clean themselves. And the more you clean yourself, the drier you become. But Jesus is saying, "Calm." In fact, what Jesus would do, Jesus would go and play with the child. Because whatever Jesus touches, it becomes clean. So I want you to know that whatever problems you carry, let Jesus into your heart and he will take care of them. Let Jesus into your heart and he will take care of everything you're worrying about. You want money? Let Jesus into your heart. Jesus will open for you doors. Jesus will send people. Because you see when you're looking for money? God is not going to drop money from heaven. God is going to bring someone. If your business passers. The way God gives you money is by the customers he sends to your shop. So I want you to accept Jesus into your heart. And make him your personal friend. I want you to accept him and know him personally. Don't know him as the God of Pastor Clarence. Know him as your father. Know him as your father. I'm here to tell you, God wants you to know him personally. He wants you to know him personally and to have a relationship with him. And wants you to get to know God personally. Just as the father loves the son. He has opened up the gates of heaven for you. I think I'm done. So now we are going to dance. We are going to dance. But before we dance, I want us to pray. I'm going to fight Pastor Clarence. And I'm going to pray. I'm going to pray for two things. I'm going to pray for people who want Jesus to come into their hearts. We are going to pray for sick people. Whatever sickness you have. I know even when I was preaching, whatever sickness that was here. Whatever sickness that is here. So as Pastor Clarence comes, we are going to pray for two things. For salvation, for Jesus to come into our hearts. For sick people. And we are going to pray that we need you. Whatever desires, we want Jesus to take care of. We hand them to him. And the reason as to why we are going to dance is to give thanks. Because God does want to take care of whatever problems we have. We are going to dance at the sign Thanksgiving. After we have danced, we are going to give thanks and go home. And here's the instruction. Wants you to go home. I want you to pray for everyone in your household. Everyone in your home. I want you to pray for them. I want you to pray for everyone in your household. Because I believe the power that is here is going to rest upon you. Because God has said, "All of us are pastors." And when you accept Jesus as your Lord and Savior here today, you've accepted him into your heart and he's going to use you. All of us are going to work together, unite. I want all of us, as you go home, I want you to pray for each and everyone in your house. If there are sick people in your house, I want you to lay hands on them and cast the sickness out. And I believe tomorrow we shall have this. Pastor Clarence.
Pastor Clarence.
Is there another one? So we're going to pray. And as Pastor Clarence is going to lead us in prayer. He's going to pray as the Holy Spirit leads him, but he's first going to ask those who want, accept Jesus into their life and walk in him. After that, we are going to pray for every sick person here. Every sick person. Also if you have a sick person at home, because you're going to be a point of contact there. Once you receive the prayer, the person at home is going to get it. It's not me doing the prayer. It's the Holy Spirit that is here and Jesus. So I want you to pray to your heart and allow Jesus to walk through you. Because remember, God sends Jesus, his son. And Jesus died so that you can live a lovely life and a free life. Going to pray and do two things. After that, I want the worship team to be near. I hope the band is still there. I hope the band is still there. After the prayer, we're just going to stand up and dance together. Yes, we're going to stand up and dance together and... They are just going to sing one song. After I had one song, our host Pastor Clarence will close us off and send us to prepare for him. I want you to come with all the sick people, all the who feel like they are disturbed, all the drunkards, all the thieves coming here to receive Jesus. Jesus is not waiting for them to be clean. He wants them to come as they are. Hallelujah.
Clap your hands to Jesus. Clap your hands to Jesus. For the good word he has preached today. Praise the Lord Jesus. I request you to rise up. Rise up on your feet. Wherever you are, rise up on your feet. Wherever you are, rise up on your feet. It's a good day. The Bible says that if you listen, let not your heart be hardened. And the Bible says again, that how shall we be saved? If we take it for granted, for this great salvation, how shall we be saved? If we take it for granted, for such a great salvation? Salvation is a good thing. Salvation is a good thing. It's receiving the love of God. Now if you understand the love of God for you, then you give your life to Jesus. And today, the call has come. Jesus is saying, he loves you. Come to me. That's why he says, "Come to me." All of you, who are filled, who are heavy laden, who are heavy laden, and I'll give you rest. There is rest with Jesus. There is rest where God is. I don't know that kind of burden that is burdening you. But I know you know it well. And Jesus is saying, there is rest with me. 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 And the first rest that God wants to give us is the rest from that heavy burden. That's why he says, that sin that is burdening you, that you should come first to him. Then he will give you rest. If therefore there is someone here who is hearing my voice and is saying, "First I need rest." Pray with me. I want to give my life to Jesus. If that is you, I want to pray with you. Today, wherever you are, raise up your hands. Wherever you are, just lift up your hands so that I pray with you. If you want to give your life to Jesus, if you're not yet saved and you want to give your life to Jesus, wherever you are, I want to pray with you. I want you to lift your hands so that I pray with you. Just lift it up. Wherever you are, so that I pray with you. Lift your hands up. I pray with you. Jesus is saying the door is open. He wants to pray with you. Welcome those who are coming for salvation. Welcome those who are coming to salvation. Welcome, welcome them. Praise the Lord. If you're under the chaos, come to me. If you're behind the chaos, because I want to pray with you. The prayer of salvation. Salvation is a good thing. Come near. Those who want to receive Jesus. Come to repentance. Come. Draw them closer. 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 Can someone help us with this? Hallelujah. People are coming. Clap your hands as they come. Those who are coming to repentance come. You can face me inside. They are coming. We have three people ready who have drawn closer. If there are others, I'm waiting for you. I'm waiting for you. I've given you two more minutes. Come.